Okay. It's probably within about thirty seconds of five o'clock and I'm going to call our meeting to order. Would everybody please join us and stand in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please do the roar. Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Bradley.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here tonight. Thank you for being here. Um, I first need a motion for approval of the agenda.
This will prove.
That went from Linda. Your second.
My second.
And before I go any further, there were no changes, correct? Okay. Linda.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Mary Ann.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Indeed.
Yes.
All right. Next, we have our public input time. Please state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period, which do not relate to action items on the agenda. And if you are going to speak, we also ask you to kind of come up here. So we can, do we still need to do that or not?
Yeah.
Is the aisle picking it up?
It picks up quite a few people, but if there's someone standing in front of you or blocking the view of you, then it's hard to see.
Yeah, so if you can just kind of stand in the middle there. So is there anybody who'd like to speak to the council tonight?
I would.
Okay. How are you, Steve?
Pardon?
I said, how are you, Steve?
Pretty good, yourself?
I'm good.
My name is Steve World. I live fifteen eighty-two, two hundred and ten street. I'm not very good at public speaking, so I'm gonna give this a shot. What I'm here about is the ATVs not being allowed in town. I've talked to Bill, I've talked to Tim a little bit, and we talked about the size of them. I do have pictures of my ATV and my old one, and you'll see they're quite a bit bigger than what they used to be. If you're interested, look them, I'll pass them around. I was surprised that the ATVs were gonna be cut out of it, because the ATVs and UTVs always went pretty much together. My ATV has factory mirrors, turn signals, horn, daytime running lights, everything. I know it's not as big as the side by sides, but I know it's twice as big as the scooters and mopeds that ride around town. I guess what I'm looking for is, is why they're eliminating them. I myself do not want to ride around town. I just want to have access to get fuel and get in and out of town. I'm on the fair board. I do take it up there to use when we have events, and I do write it through town for that. I have help with the hero hustle and wounded warrior. We use it for safety and traffic control. So I just wanted to voice my opinion and ask you to please leave the ATVs in. So if I can answer any questions about them, or if I can do anything else to uh, help you allow them in there, let me know.
Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry. I don't understand why yours is considered an ATV instead of a UTV. I don't know that much about them. Can you explain to me why yours is considered an ATV as opposed to a UTV?
ATVs, you straddle like motorcycles.
So it's only the sitting part?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it's also got to do with size. Uh, an ATV has a handlebar, a UTV will have a steering wheel and a seat like a car does.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Yep. There any other questions?
We've got this on our agenda as of later. I didn't even talk about that. Yes, we certainly can share and discuss it then. I would, so. Yes. It's not a public hearing on that agenda item, so unless the mayor opens it up for comment from the public at that point, it really is just a discussion with the council.
And I would probably anticipate that'll probably happen. So, okay. Do you want your pictures back, or do you want to share it with anybody else?
I have more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else? Okay, at five oh four, I'm going to go ahead and close our public input period. Next before us, we have our consent agenda. Item one, I need approval of our minutes from the April tenth city council meeting. Item two, I need a motion to adopt resolution twenty-eight approving the bills. Our next item, I need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of our city reports from PNZ, the library board, and the board of adjustments. Next, I need a motion to adopt resolution twenty-nine to approve the appointment of Lindsay Dolemeyer to a one-year term and Sarah Mauer to a two-year term on an eastern Iowa regional housing authority board, and that's for ECIA. Next, I need a motion to adopt resolution thirty to set Monday, May eighth at five PM as the date and time for a public hearing on the community development block grant status of funds for the Howard and Helen Shelley Memorial Park Improvement Project. Our next motion is to um, set May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three at five PM as the date and time for a public hearing on the proposed budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. We also need a motion um, to review the decision of the Board of Adjustment to approve the request of the Citizen State Bank. They have a tower, constructing a forty-five foot inch tall tower adjacent to their building. Next is resolution thirty-one, I need a motion to adopt that, and that is a salary resolution for our police officer and a librarian who have completed two years with the city. Next, I have resolution thirty-one, or excuse me, I need an I need approved payment for an invoice totaling nine thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars to Fergram, and that's for field work and design on East Main Street, utility coordination and easements, all for East Main Street. With that, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'd just like to note, at the last meeting, we had set May eighth for the timing date for a public hearing on the post amendment with the publication requirements of ten and twenty, and there were a few little questions I still had. I wasn't able to get it published in time to meet the requirements for May eighth. So that's why we're pushing it back to May twenty-second.
Okay, thank you.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, the motion for Mary Ann.
Well, second that.
Second, Linda. Any further questions for anybody? Hearing none? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Tanya? Yes. Dean?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll go on to our regular agenda items. Before we first, we're gonna talk about ordinance three, the code on altering vehicles and UTVs, ATVs, UTVs. And I think we are looking at maybe doing our first reading on this tonight. Is that correct? First consideration adoption.
I have gone back and updated the ordinance, I think, with everything that we had discussed at the last meeting, so um, so it's brought back to you for either further discussion, or if you're ready, it would be time to go to the first consideration.
And.
Yeah, but it's just, I, like I said, I think I got everything from the last meeting. I'm not sure what's in, like, everything was in the way talking about.
Yeah, and I know you brought up some questions that came up when you were with the recorder's office, is that correct?
Yes.
And then if anybody has questions for, I believe we've got Kevin and Tracy and Steve out there. If anybody has questions for them to, feel free to ask them.
So I'm guessing in those ordinance, much as Steve said, nobody can operate an altering vehicle in this ATV defined by section three two one I O code, uh, unless it's owned by and operated by a government vehicle. In his UTV, or his, his ATV is a little bigger than his old one, your first one?
Correct.
So I mean, do they really define him any different, Steve? I guess, I, I don't mind something like yours coming into town. I don't want your old one coming into town. So how would a person list it? Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, and it's gonna be one of those fine lines where I, I don't think you're gonna be able to make the difference.
The equipment on, basically.
Yeah, I don't think the older ones have turn signals or the equipment on that mine do.
Yeah, I don't think my old ones have turn signals on it.
No, not from back in the days when we rode them, you know, farming and stuff like that, I guess.
Right.
So you had mentioned that you bring it, when you usually bring it into town, use it for events like the hero hustle or like for the, for the fair, which we could consider special considerations for those things, because the hero hustle is something that the city partakes in as well, and the fair is something we could discuss at that time as well. I think our concern was just people just kind of riding them around in town. Yes, well, all the new, because we really looked at ATV versus UTV. I guess that's, so do you usually bring it into town other than for those types of events, or what else do you bring it to town for?
I just quest to town. I bring it into town to get fuel, and if I'm going up to the fairgrounds or somebody sells. No, I do not come into town just to ride around, and I don't know of anybody with them that just actually comes up and drives around.
There's a lot of people living in town that are doing that now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, just, I think most of your stuff is covered in what we're saying here, because it says that the ATVs can be used when authorized by the Park and Rec Commission, okay, which would be hero hustle and at a special event authorized by the city, and I certainly think that the fair could be considered under that, because we deal, I mean, we, we work with the, the fairgrounds all the time. I think your only problem would be the driving in to get gas, you know? Okay, so I guess my question is, any other way you can get gas, you know, can you?
You, I can definitely load it, and I, and I've done that in the past. It's just a, a lot of work to load it. It's just to, to fuel up.
Does your ATV weigh more than what we have on here? Less than twelve hundred pounds?
Yeah, it weighs less than twelve hundred pounds.
It does.
Right around eight hundred.
Because you said it's bigger than what the ones used to be.
I'm gonna say it probably weighs between eight, eight hundred and fifty pounds. They're a lot heavier and bigger than what they used to be.
Yours is also designed as a two-pass.
It is. It's a two-up.
Well, maybe, maybe they're into the single passenger compared to a double passenger. I don't know. I'm just I'm drawing ideas out.
For snowmobiles, we do have language that snowmobiles may be operated on illist streets, but private streets, but then it says snowmobiles may be operated on all the streets in the city for the sole and exclusive purpose of using the most direct way for ingress and egress from the city. No snowmobile shall be driven on any roadway solely for entertainment or pleasure.
And didn't we do that kind of with the basis that we did the initial ATV, UTV when we first initially did that? That was one of the sole purposes, because they were looking to get fuel, so while they were doing their rides, they could get to the gas stations and stuff. And that was kind of the catalyst for the first one. Yeah.
Why can't we put that back in? This one.
Well, there's even under the UTVs must have equipment, it would almost have everything we'd want on there, except they would just need to change the word to ATVs. Operator calibrated, horn.
Yes.
Uh, operational headlights, taillights, front and back, tail lamps, stop lamps, turn signals, well, square-facing mirrors, operational muffler and good working order. What a big difference here. Do you have to have a flag on yours?
I do have a flag on it.
Yeah, so I mean, it's almost kind of the same, except it would have to be right how it's written in there.
That's, that's the only difference between them, really. It's how you sit in them.
Yeah, yeah, as long as it's got turn signals and.
And that stuff, it's all factory. I mean, it came right from the factory with that stuff.
Are there many like yours, you think, around town?
I know a couple. I've seen a couple around town. I'm gonna say maybe three or four. ATVs are a minority. They, they really are. And I just like the open riding. I, I ride motorcycles, so to me, it's, it's, it's similar.
More like riding bikes.
Or motorcycles.
Yeah.
It is.
Instead of a three-wheeler, you like the four-wheeler.
Yep.
We could make some adjustments to the ATV policy based on kind of what Bill was saying.
Yeah, it's under that part of it.
We're noticing that we're having issues with it down the line. We can always change it or kind of take back and make it more restrictive at that time.
Were the police getting a lot of reports of people running around or issues like that, your, under us and Chad?
We had one individual that works on Henderson, so I'd read the rails, down the street and anything else.
I know who it is. He ran out of fuel over here one day, because somebody from over there in the corner, after he's looking down into the yard, that he owes a license, he wasn't, nothing.
Whether UTV or ATV.
It was an ATV. It was, he was tearing up my father-in-law's place, too.
There's one that zips down my street once in a while. I don't know who's that is. I don't.
Yeah, so I assume to go by.
But as a whole, there's not, you know, for the numbers of stuff inside there.
It's usually UTV that guys you run around. Besides that guy and the other one, that's the only ATV I see. Usually it's UTVs coming out from Hart Ridge, coming into town.
Once lake weather starts up, everybody's down on the lake. That's when we see the, they go by our house constantly going between the lake to fairway to fit, yeah, and it's crazy, yeah.
Under seventy-five oh three, I could add that um, language that Bill was talking about that's under seventy-five oh six requirements for UTVs.
Yeah, number eight.
Number eight, that ATVs must be equipped with. And so those.
Actually, it's six, seven, eight, in a kind of in a sense.
Yeah. If the, if the council won, and then we could put that restriction that we have under the snowmobiles of direct route in and out.
My goal is not to make this difficult for you. You have plenty to do as it is. I, I do apologize for it. I just, they went hand in hand to them. And uh, I mean, there's a lot of good to it.
It's, it's evolving. It's very different from what it was even when we first put this in, so it's, and it's just always going to evolve. And then the state came in and did some other things that messed up what all the communities were doing. So it's good to get all the information before we move forward.
The reason the communities initially had to do ordinances was because the state didn't have an ordinance.
Right.
And even then, I said, if the state were to come up with some rules, we wouldn't need to. I still feel that way. I don't know why. And I personally don't think the city needs to have regulations that go beyond what the state does, because people are out driving around in the state, and they know what the rules are. I, I think it's an inconvenience for them to have to figure out what each city's doing, because they went farther than the state.
With what the state did, you see a lot of rides, and I know people coming into the west end of town for food, fuel, bathrooms, that kind of stuff. If you just limit some of them, they're, they're in town. They don't know what the ordinance is, and then it makes it really difficult.
I'm kind of odd man out, I think, on the council, but I don't think the city needs an ordinance at all. I think we just need to say, we'll go by what the state says. Uh, I don't think it's more dangerous here than it is somewhere else. And, and I think the person that gets on the vehicle takes on the responsibility to drive safely, and you can't pass laws against stupid. That, in my view, is, I'm certainly in favor of the, the ordinance we have is a good move, because it's, it's a, it's a move towards more freedom, but, but that I support. But I, I didn't even go farther, not even have it at all. I mean, that's my view.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm assuming the fines are still the same no matter what you're riding. Somebody on a four-wheeler gets a hefty fine, they might think twice about what they've been doing.
Absolutely.
Many fines have been issued. There's also warnings at this point.
Most of the warnings.
A lot of people, to explain it, they just don't have a clue that they can't be here, correct?
So what's our uh, options here? Tim, can we add, or Aaron? Can we add much like seventy-five oh six? Most of the stuff on there, same thing, we wouldn't want them riding between, you know, eleven and six. Must have license, must have insurance. You know, what we'd have to do is kind of change that word to ATVs. I love that's possible. Rear-facing, I mean, some of it's on there, of course.
Bill?
Yeah.
The concern I would, I would suggest, I like, makes sense to do what you're thinking, but I would suggest you give Aaron or me, or both of us, a chance to make sure we carry all the things through the ordinance.
Yeah, right, right.
So we could, we can come back next meeting with a clean one with that. Then, I'm not quite sure we could do it on the fly here.
No, I, I, I agree. I, I know that, but I'm just asking what our next option was.
Would we just table this and ask for any first consideration at the next meeting then?
I don't think you'd even need to table it.
Just take no action? We just ask that you update it with the things we talked about and bring it back for first? And we could even waive a second reading if we liked it, yes?
Right.
Yeah, if, if we have news, load on that, council can wait. Second, third reading, please.
So we're thinking, just so I make sure I get it correctly, under seventy-five oh six requirements for UTVs, we're gonna take item six, seven, and eight.
We almost need one, two.
And move those to the.
Three. Four.
Well, actually, probably one through.
One through eight.
One through eight, well, they don't do the safety harnesses.
Right. Correct, that, that's kind of what I see. Everything up one through.
Basically, probably everything from that section that would make sense for an ATV.
Yeah.
Because obviously we don't want them operating open containers of alcohol. And uh, and then, do you want to take the language from the snowmobile city code where it's most direct route in and out, or?
Probably listed on the UTVs. This can't be on thirteen. Correct?
The in and out would be to do all the ATVs, even the ones that don't, because you looks, you're getting, you're gonna, you're planning on doing ATVs similarly situated as UTVs treated the same, right?
Yes.
So if you're gonna have the route in and out, that would be for the ATVs that aren't equipped. Do you want to make a, a special rule for that?
Uh, well, the U, ATVs that don't have turn signals technically won't be allowed unless it's snowing.
County, they can't, basically can't go anywhere.
No.
If you don't have the turn signals and stuff on them.
You can't drive.
They're not legal anywhere in the state.
No. They shouldn't be in town at all, or.
Or the county.
In the county.
Because the county, when we started out, the county had the same rules for UTV, ATV. You had to have headlights on, turn signals. That's why a lot of people haven't gotten them anymore, because
Right.
to update an older one or two order.
Yes, to see a lot of the older ones, for you, it's just on the farm.
Yeah.
Most of them don't leave the farm area.
Mine is a lot, my zone's had five years.
Well, so my question would be, do we really need two sections? If you're gonna allow the ATV that follows these specifications, why don't we put it in as all ATVs and UTVs that follow these specifications are allowed to do these things? If you don't, then you don't get in, you don't. And, yeah. And then you don't have to worry about the fastest, shortest, whatever, because you're allowing the same.
I think that's what you were envisioning.
Restrictions, but instead of separating them out, yeah, say any ATV or UTV that follows these guidelines seem reasonable? That you put them all together into one.
The county ordinance was both combined, and I think the city had both combined in the same. They're one in the same.
And then just say, if you don't have all of these things on your ATV or UTV, then
so. I'll get rid of seventy-five oh three, that's ATVs all by itself, and then combine everything.
I just think it's easier.
Clean it up some, okay. I think I have.
Everybody.
Good job.
Okay. All right, so we will take no action on this tonight. Are we ready to move on then?
Yeah, thank you for coming and talking to us.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely. All right. Next, we have an open burning request from Casey Lewin, operating Manchester Truck. I think he's coming back with information that we have requested as far as the, where the trees were located and so forth.
If you look, open up the map that was attached, there's a copy of the map on TV. That makes it a leisure for a look at. So the, the area that he's trying to identify is basically along ditch line district north of his building, uh, almost up to the uh, uh, gas. Yeah. Since where they put the other, sent in that gas point there. So there's approximately um, five trees that are about forty foot in height. Uh, there, there's maybe another fifteen to twenty trees that are um, up to twenty feet. The rest of them are scrub Russian and, and junk trees. Working with Jason Hay, we estimated about thirty truckloads of debris there. Well, Casey's identified on the map is that X marks the spot. That's kind of where he was looking to, to do the burn. That would put it quarter mile away from any residents in the area. So that would meet the requirement of the D R, DNR.
Well, so he's not gonna burn right there. He's gonna burn more on the X.
He's, yeah. Black hills, black hills, fur away from the gas station as possible.
That's one or this one?
There's one by the pond.
By the pond.
There's a bigger mountain there.
I think, and so that is, what's the rounded, the thing that's circle, there's an X circled.
Go here.
Yeah, where's it at?
We're looking over here.
Yeah, but what's this about? What's this one? Circle one.
That's outside the city limits. That, that's a leased property. So I'm talking about this area right here.
It's probably just an indicator.
This is the X.
Okay, because there was an X on the other side, too. That's why I was questioning.
So it's this area here. Sorry. So here's the X by the pond.
Yep.
What's this area here? Here's that gas station. There's this building.
A long way to haul off it. Is it gonna cause any issues with the businesses surrounding it, or would it cause any issues with Highway twenty and if the wind would switch direction?
Yes, yes.
Fire chief.
Hey.
There's one over there. Yeah. Again, it's gonna be wet. It's probably gonna dry out a little bit before it gets lit up. If, if we allow it to burn. Air quality's gonna be an issue.
How long would this take to burn? I mean, I'm seeing it burning for days.
Probably not, but I'll bet it would probably burn ten, twelve hours. It's wet, at least, and smolder. You know what we're talking about, Ken?
Yeah. I got something I was gonna ask you about. I received two phone calls yesterday afternoon of a large brush fire very similar to this, just south of the Beckman complex.
Did you respond to that?
What's that?
Did you respond to that?
I just said, there's nothing I can do about it, because as far as I know, as far as writing anything down, it's we can't go out and
As a fire.
Shut it down.
Is it in town?
It was, yeah. As far as I know, it is, unless it's AG exemplars, so.
No, not example, because you're still within a quarter mile of the residence. So either contact the police department or acting fire chief can shut it down, because they have authority to do that as well.
We've been told that we can't, we're not authorized as far as writing a ticket or anything. I was told that comes back onto the city inspector, the building inspector.
No.
Is that correct?
No. Well, again, an officer can issue a ticket, Tim Ives can issue the ticket, Farming can swear an affidavit and, and affidavit on that as well. So if, if we were notified that there was something going on, that can be handled that way. Wasn't aware of anything that was burning inside.
Inside file. I didn't know if it's AG exemplar, he's had, he's got enough ground or not.
ZR still doesn't allow it. Yeah, be a quarter mile away from any residents, so, no, that would not have been permissible.
And it drove by, but they said, I know about where it's at. I saw the file sitting there, so.
He did burn it?
So it's just gonna open the can of worms, where everybody's gonna say, well, you got it too, like that.
Special permission.
You know, if you special, or if somebody does it and craves forgiveness later.
Well, the issue with this, this one specifically, like, I understand what they're saying, because this was storm damage. This was something that was caused by a storm. This isn't something just, oh, I want to clear on my property.
Right.
So that, to me, this is a little bit different. My concern, though, is how it will impact the businesses directly around it and how it will impact or negatively possibly impact traffic on Highway twenty.
Well, my question is, all these other people that have stormed in, just hauled away and paid someone to do it, you should just get to, well, I'm gonna burn it. Is that really? I don't need those, those I'm talking about. Well, you guys had some, too. Yeah, we had some, so.
I was, I was, I was glad we could, we had somebody available to haul away, because it would have been on the ice for months.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, for sure.
We, I was glad to get it taken care of, and I wouldn't have wanted to burn it, and uh, more of a residential area down there, it would have been hard to find it. I mean, the center side that got burned was a big enough hassle. And here, but I am concerned about how long it will burn. Those trees are gonna really have a lot of moisture in them. They won't burn very well.
And I agree with you, Linda. I think people see it burning. They're gonna know it's in the city limits. They're gonna start saying, okay.
Yeah, you got to.
I just, I just see it opening a whole can of worms that we don't really want. To me, the answer would be no, we don't let him burn, because that's what it says in our laws. You don't burn in town, period.
But then you take it to the brush dump.
You know, I understand that.
How that falls the brush dump right now?
It's full.
But we're, I think we got the declaration, so we will get some payment money. Are they actually reimbursed?
I haven't seen the declaration part yet. I know we've submitted stuff that we think we might get it. If you've heard something differently.
No, I know Mandy was optimistic.
So that'll at least help re- reimburse part of our cost.
So what do you do? So did, how many trees did you have?
Thirty or more, thirty or thirty-five.
They had to take to the end, that's about what he's got.
Yeah, a bunch of scrub.
This much or more. They hauled with three dump trucks for two days.
But if he hauls it to the brush dump, he will have to pay the cost and and the cost to remove.
And then the city pays the cost to grind it.
It's a bad deal, no matter how you look at it.
Yeah. I I kinda like, Linda, I I don't like, care for the idea of the smoke and the smolder forever. I mean, that that, it's gonna smoke like crazy. You know, even if he lets it sit till fall, it's still gonna smoke like crazy.
They were pine trees. They burn fast.
Christmas trees. Okay, I'll go back. So, are we looking for a motion on this? I want to do?
We need permission to grant, correct?
If you're going to grant permission to burn on site, you have to make a motion to grant that. If you're not going to authorize it, you don't have to make a motion, because the motion's evaded. It's just, you're gonna follow the ordinance.
Okay, I'm gonna follow the ordinance. No burning.
Anybody else wanna say something different to that or not?
I don't hear anybody pushing.
I'd say no burning too, because either way, if the wind's going one way, it's gonna impact businesses, or it'll impact air quality in town, or negatively impact Highway twenty, and I don't want for some reason, causing an accident. Then we can present a benefit by saying no. Okay?
Alright. So I guess we're gonna follow the ordinance. Alright. Next item, uh, we have a special request for, or a request for a special exemption until I stop restrictions. Jeff, I'm sending, thank you, guys. At nine oh nine West Marion Street, would like to have six or less laying hens. And is requesting a special exemption. I think she, he's even got letters from his neighbors and so forth. So I just need, uh, discussion on that. If not, I'll take a motion to approve that.
What, we just done to do a standard form on some of this stuff?
Uh, it has not been finalized yet.
Oh.
Thanks for bringing that up, Bill.
I say we approve it, it falls.
The ordinance allows for the councilman script, it's special exception for the, uh, draft that we're putting together was, was to six or less.
So that they didn't have to really.
This is for six or less.
I would second that.
What's that?
Her motion.
Okay, she said this, okay. Alright, so I have a motion in a second.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, no other discussion? Tanya, yes? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Bring on the chickens.
I think it's great.
Alright, um, item five four is regarding the Meadowbrook Trail Extension on East Main Street. I'm gonna let you speak to this, Tim, before we make a motion on it.
Yep, uh, so this will be extending the trail. Uh, we, we planned on doing that with the East Main Street Project twenty twenty-two. Uh, part of the Meadowbrook subdivision development. We did not want to put the trail in until they had the houses built along the trail location, because we didn't want them driving heavy equipment over top of it. So, you know, the houses have been built. The road is in place. We'd like to add this trail section in to complete that trail to the east portion of the city limits. Um, so we keep that gap going. So when we do our snowmobile, we have a place to turn around and everything else. We have a number of quotes, uh, with, uh, ace, meaning the low quote, ace concrete uh, with quote of fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars, excuse me, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty cents. And we'll pay for this, uh, a bunch of sales tax with, uh, the signature of the center side for trails and sidewalks.
Well, I make a motion to approve the quit from ace concrete to finish the bikeway walkway trail along East Main Street in the Meadowbrook subdivision.
Thank you, Bill. Can we hear a second? Okay, alright. I have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
See?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, next item is East Main speed limit. I think all of us have been hearing information from people regarding that they don't like that it's as slow as it is out there in the East Main, and we've gotten the sidewalks done, and I know that was something that we had said that we would revisit that after the sidewalks were in. So I went ahead and put that on the agenda for tonight, so that we could discuss that.
The twenty-five from where to where? You just from the three-way stop this way?
It's, it's on here. West Main from Franklin to fifty. To McCarran Drive, yeah.
Well, it goes all the way out to McCarran.
It used to not start until, what was it, near Bailey Drive is where it used to start at twenty-five there.
Yeah, it was thirty-five.
Oh, what thirty-five out there coming down?
And it's thirty-five on Franklin from the dirty town north.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, so I was thinking thirty would be maybe an appropriate speed to, that's just my own suggestion. You guys.
Tell me what it is you wanna change, from where to where, to what speed limit?
From, what is it? Uh, we go to three-way stop there, Bailey Drive, out to McCarran Drive, or to increase that to thirty, from twenty-five to thirty. Can we bring it into town a bit more?
What, what, what is? Is it goes thirty-five then?
Yeah, once you get west of Bailey Drive, you're in a really residential area. Residential speed limit typically be twenty-five mile an hour.
Yeah, I think we need to keep that.
Franklin too?
Uh, North Franklin is thirty-five to get to Acre Street, and then it drops down to thirty.
Acre Street down to Main Street, or to the four corners.
All the way down to the downtown now. Uh, this is still two-lane, uh, once we get from Bailey Drive out east. It's two-lane from Bailey Drive to, to you, to basically Madison.
So, yeah, you could go to Meadowbrook probably thirty, but I don't know. I, people I know have said that it's very difficult coming off of coming back into town from, like, from Earlville or Delaware, coming in on Old Twenty.
Well, it would be helpful if the county.
And the counties is.
To forty-five, once you hit.
And it's not.
DJ's area.
And it's not.
Apparently did out to Harwich. They lowered it out there.
Oh, did they?
I wanna say Harwich. Why, I just came to, I thought it said thirty-five.
It is. I'm driving out there to go to speed.
Much into a journal. I'll take my golf clubs and I'll go.
Do you want a slight recess?
I guess I, I'm not against raising it, but being from Bailey's Ford out, I just.
Because then, it's already from McCarran to the city limits is already thirty-five, so then it would be thirty-five of that whole.
No, right now it's twenty-five.
From McCarran east.
So then they would only be changing.
Right.
I think that, I think that's a good idea. Now that we have the sidewalks in, I think it's perfect. Before the sidewalks were there. So what are you proposing then? Well, what Connie has proposed would be that it would be thirty-five.
I said thirty.
Thirty, okay. I'm gonna suggest thirty-five.
Uh, the only reason I said thirty is everybody drives about five miles over, correct, Chad?
If you're lucky.
Yes, um, yeah, so, I mean, I don't want it to get too crazy over there either, because I know we have some elderly people who are in the assisted living and are also living in some of those, who pull out there as well. I'm just thinking safety. I was gonna say thirty, but you guys get to vote. If you wanna do thirty-five, that's the way it is.
Camp courageous is a, can we kinda hear you there too?
Yes, yes.
That's why I'm comfortable with thirty. I mean, if it's thirty-five coming in, drops down to thirty.
That's better than thirty-five to twenty-five, so, okay, let's go thirty.
I would make that motion that we go thirty miles an hour from Bailey Drive to McCarran, to McCarran Drive.
Close out the organs for you to have it ready for you to next meeting. Need to have an order, if you can, just do it by motion.
And it's twenty-five from Bailey Drive east, or to west, right?
Well, it gets them to slow down a little bit each time.
East Main, because it's a little.
Yeah.
It's a very gentle ride.
I wanna see the movement again. How does it go when you're going over it?
No.
Bill, that is so rough, that we do not like taking our son in the system wheelchair, because he just, right, yeah, it's true.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, next we have the fire hydrant painting project.
Uh, just wanted to, the council, you may notice, there's a number of hydrants along their main drags that are now green. Uh, that is actually a zinc primer on them. Uh, we are taking, we've hired, um, K W coatings to sand last the hydrants. We're doing about fifty of them, sand last them down to bare metal. Do a four-part paint, uh, with the zinc primer being on part of it. Zinc primer is a sacrificial primer, so when we have, uh, rust coming up, basically part of that's coming from the salt and snowmobile, ice removal, and stuff like that, that's hitting the hydrants, uh, gets pushed into them. This will help protect the hydrants, let them last longer. They will be painted, I believe yellow is our color that we paint them. So they'll come back in Thursday or Friday this week. Uh, and they'll put a tent over them or tarp over them and paint them.
So they're not staying the green they are now?
No.
Cause the questions I had was, how are the fire department going to find the hydrants at night if they?
We just.
Well, same way I find them, as I stumble over it.
It's still a really pink yellow. That was, I think, a big question.
No, they are color-coded, so the fire, no, wood size hydrant, or how much flow comes out of it. We don't, we don't allow fire, fires to paint.
Yeah, keep going.
But I wanted to, the council, because you'll see that, I know there are every question in town.
Okay, thank you. Alright. There's nothing else on our regular agenda, so we'll go on to our construction updates. Uh, Sam, I think I said you could in first.
So, few, a few things. First thing, river cleanup there Saturday, April fifteenth, that went pretty good. We basically went from the pool down to about, um, the shelter at the Whitewater Park. Didn't get as much, um, kind of thought, so I guess it's a good thing, and certainly it's pretty clean, but, um, they get much past the shelter. I guess they found the group that went south, hit a confetti bomb, so there's a lot of confetti down there, they had to pick up and stuff, but, um, the way they say it went, went pretty good for the most part. East Main Street, last year's project, so we got a whole of Pierce Tobin, tons and tons of items sent that out. Mainly just kinda adding topsoil, regressing a few areas, touching up seating, um, hopefully they're here in the next week or two, like, the grass is all coming in pretty good. Out there. One area, asphalt area in the alley by the car wash. Um, that's gonna get ripped, removed and relayed. Um, they have put a patch in there. I don't know if they ran out of mix one day, and then came back and put some in later, but it just didn't look the greatest. When we look at it again this spring, it doesn't really, it's still does not look very great, so, um, Tyler Perry too, are gonna have them remove and replace that, that portion. Um, the rest of the items is pretty much just, uh, seeding topsoil items, so, um, uh, this year's, I'll call it twenty, so two thousand twenty-four, East Main Street improvements project. Had a property owner meeting Tuesday at the fire station for, to discuss the utilities. Um, then have a huge turnout of property owners, like, there's only about eight, eight present, um, Linda was there.
Yeah, it was a very big crowd.
Hoping to have a bigger turnout, but at least a few of them came and asked some questions, so it was good. Um, Alliance Energy did have a representative there, and their engineer was there, so I was kind of the kicker, that we'll make sure they were at least there. Um, Black Hills Energy had a representative there, Bob Knight Gill, um, they called us the day after he could make the meeting, had a couple of questions. Um, so we got those answered. Alliance are gonna start their work, hopefully mid-May, they're gonna have a pre-construction meeting on May tenth. So, um, and myself will probably turn that, Perry, if you have any questions as far as the city side of the city project. West Street Marion Street Bridge, West Marion Street Bridge, excuse me. So we have another bridge inspection scheduled for that, May tenth. Which, it does need maintenance work, so it is not deficient in any manner. Um, and then, the maintenance costs, we had twenty-twenty was about one point two million dollars. Um, I think it was mentioned, well, maybe a couple of months ago. City kinda got moved up their third on the list, candidate list, so hopefully next year.
We're a pirate, and I thought we were.
City gets some funds over the next year. And the last item is the disc golf course. It's kind of an annual map, but I think they kinda got things laid out. Um, Randy was gonna shoot in the locations, send the points, point file the next, we can get kind of a site map and whole maps kinda set up. For that, so the next week or two here, so that's.
Will it be open this summer? Is that the goal?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Second require some cleanup, some moving brush and.
Um, probably a little bit, I would guess. And only kinda try to map out where there's kind of any existing, there's like a walking trailer, any game trail out there, they're trying to set them up along along that, but there might be some things, like, it's a little bit of cleanup lots to do, and they're gonna try to put, with their grants, they're gonna get, try to put a you know, concrete pad if they can, where the tee-offs are, or, but then, depending if they can't get the grant or not, that it might just be a mulch area or just grass. I think there'll be a small old parking area, um, out there too. Straight off, I think is it eight? The street.
That is Eighth Street.
Eighth Street, yeah, so basically right off the end of that, past the hospital, we'll build a parking area, but.
I was wondering if they're gonna let us park in the hospital parking lot, or how they're gonna do that.
Nope, I assume they don't have any other questions. That's all I have.
What are you seeing for the special assessments on that?
Assessments work on getting all's put together into you, so we can get that.
Yeah.
At least, that way when it's finalized and sent out final, yes, we can get.
Yeah, we need to get a divorcee, so that we can have them drafting, uh, with proceedings. So, but probably once we know closer to when the final pass, it's gonna come.
And there will be, be a couple items added to that pass, but I know they, they cleaned some filtered bags out there, put new filter socks out, so um, minimal cost, but we'll have another change order before the final, just to get any other pay items that we've paid them for, um, this spring on there.
Any further questions for Sam? Alright, thanks, Sam. Jason?
Thank you. Uh, the last proceeding out of Wetlands was completed on sixth of April, so first before Easter. We pumped the ponds down. We kept them pumped down for the last couple of weeks, hopefully. I was hoping the warm temperatures would have stayed a little bit warmer than they have been, to maybe get some mission germination, so we'll just have to watch that. And there's a chance they may actually come back and touch that up, depending on if they can actually take off out there. Uh, we have a few erosion items we have to take care of when they're out there. Some more lime onto the trail, and I did a couple of things on the east end. We're getting some direct runoff off the farm field, but I wasn't expecting, so we did a little bit of work over there to kinda get that. I'll get a few erosion items we have to take care of when they're out there, uh, or, some lime onto the trail, and I did a couple things on the east end, we're getting some direct runoff off the farm field, but I wasn't expecting, so we did a little bit of work over there to kinda get that in before they kinda prevent any future issues out there. Um, so, hopefully we start seeing some green, that, this, the, some of the grass and that kind of stuff start to pop, so I'm thinking here in the next few weeks, we get some, some more, like, and so we should start seeing this, comfortable with that. Last Friday, uh, generators delivered for Grayson Court, this station, I'm not sure if they've actually set it on the pad yet or not, um, but it's here. Um, Perry was gonna coordinate with Black Hills and, and Brian to get out there to get the gas run to it. Once we get that in, and they like, they'll tie it, we'll actually have a formal startup with, uh, Three E, who is the supplier, and that'll start, that'll be the trigger for the start of the warranty, and all that kinda, uh, things on that. Um, they also, uh, got Todd Perry receive the doors and replace the two doors on the lift station, and actually had a carpenter come in to reset the lock sets, just so they made sure. They need one underground contractors trying to do carpentry, so they brought a couple guys out, out of Harley area to, I suppose, have been replaced. Um, and they had a punchless, had a caulk around the base, but that, with that rain we got last week, that, that foam, the foam gasket underneath was holding a lot of moisture, so it ceiling was not, so we're gonna wait till it kinda dries up a little bit to come back and actually finish that caulking ceiling on that. And then we have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow morning here at City Hall for the library parking lot project. Uh, thirty, uh, Chick Frye has had a couple other projects stall out on them, so I think we'll have to mobilize in the next couple of weeks, potentially, to start that, based on, but we'll know more tomorrow morning after the, after the pre-con meeting, but they may wanna start excavating and clearing out the less kind of, we'll time out the, the transition, um, reporting that front sidewalk before they actually start on the big part, so. That's where we're at.
Questions for Jason?
Good question, they're talking about Animal Health International, the big culvert, they've got the, the tarp kind of out there, do we know when that's going to be?
That's probably, that's, uh, that water main, there was the water main project, so they've got, there's salt pens out there, still has prey holding some holding some water back in the waterway out there, so.
You don't know it if you're, if you're just driving on West Main, but if you come off that and go into work, like I do, you notice it more?
Grass is coming in.
It's starting to, it's coming, the grass is starting to come in, I said, now how soon you have to.
I haven't, just driven up, driven past it, so, hey. Not sure what you're talking about, but.
Typically eighty percent covered is when you can pull the temporary roof control items, so.
I mean, like another month?
Depending whenever, yeah, it's, is that seventy percent of educations? What's established, considered established, so, yeah, I'll reach out to Nick and just see if there's anything else clean up they need to do out there. Thanks.
Thanks, Jason. Um, Jeff?
I have nothing to say.
Alright, Tim?
A couple items, uh, just a reminder, next week, we have our committee hall meeting, will be at the library. We'll do a tour of the library, sounds like we may have more information for you next week, as to, uh, when the status of that project will happen, uh, just kinda wanna let the council know, I don't know if you're reading the legislative link from the Iowa League of Cities. Uh, the House has passed a property tax reform proposal, uh, that is House File seven eighteen. The Senate has passed a property tax reform proposal as well, that's Senate File five sixty-nine. Uh, they are different in how they work. Um, right now, I can tell you, I think the House File does the least amount of harm to us. Um, the Senate File does create a number of challenges and hurdles for us. Um, well, some of the talking points that, that's going out right now is, we were issuing bonding, I believe in the House File, uh, we can, they're looking to time the bonding at this time, only once a year, and that would be in November election. With the Senate File, I believe it's once every two years, basically, the general election, so if you have a bond referendum that fails, you have to wait two years for it to go back.
Ooh.
Uh, having everything in the same night also does have a challenge with, with the, uh, right now, with the interest rates, you know, they fluctuate every day, typically can't see where they're going. But we, we know that they're going on the projections, typically we try to issue bonds prior to them going up, or while they're on the way down. But that will create some issues too, um.
So do they, do they decide which one, or they merge them together, or what's?
Well, that's the negotiations that's going on right now, uh, my understanding of them, the, uh, week, uh, meeting today, they will pass something this year. Um, there are two, what I've heard from another colleague of mine is, their representative or senator said they're too far down the rabbit hole now to kick it off for another year, something will happen this year. Uh, again, the House File is one that seems to be less restrictive than what the Senate File is. Uh, both have growth limitations on there. Um, still not sure how they'll implement those growth limitations, how that works exactly, that's part of the negotiations, if it's three percent increase, and they're not looking at levy rates, they're looking at total taxable dollars probably pays. Well, there's three major property tax people that levy, it's the city, the county, and the school. And so is that three percent total? Is that coming from one entity, so, say, the city didn't increase their levy rate, but school increased, there's four percent, the county increased, there's two. Does that mean we all get cut back, so it's down to a three percent, or do they make the school receivers down to three percent? You know, how does that dollar amount work? How do they come to that? Is it in the singular for each unit, or is it?
And how do you explain that to constituents, that they understand it?
It, it is, it's not very clear, and it's hard to do that in a manner that you can say it within a thirty-second soundbite.
Right.
There was something in there about growth and the eight-ten limit being adjusted.
Yeah.
If you have growth, you get more money.
Uh, they are limiting your growth to, if your levy is over eight-ten, so we have the emergency levy, so we do the eight-ten plus the twenty-seven cent emergency levy. And then there's a couple other levies they were wanting to combine, if you're over eight-ten, your growth is limited to two and a half percent. If you're under eight-ten, your growth can be three and a quarter percent. But it really does, but, but, but.
I'm, I'm confused by what is the growth?
The total dollars that are collected. See, that's where this really comes to play, cities, counties, and schools have said, you know, for years, that we're holding the line, our levy rate has not changed. Property values have changed, and so the property owners have seen their share go up, because their, their valuation, their assesses have increased over the years. You know, for years, we've kept ours fairly flat. Uh, but the reality is, valuations have increased faster this last year, as most people saw their tax bill, valuation went. But what they don't see is what the rollback's going to do, and right now, there's a projection that the rollback is gonna be down to forty-six percent. Well, we're at fifty-six, or excuse me, fifty-four and a half percent right now, so if hundred thousand dollar home, you're being taxed on either fifty-six or fifty-four and a half percent right now this year, next year will be taxed on forty-six percent of that hundred thousand home. So you're already seeing that reduction in what the taxable value is. But now they're looking to cap it even further. And the challenge is, they've already changed the calculations for commercial industrial property, which is shifting more toward onto residential, because sixty-five percent of our valuation is residential value.
And there's a misconception that we are setting assessed values, and that is not, that's not the case at all.
Assessed values are, the reason the assessor raises the values is because the state tells them they have to.
The, the state says the assessor has to be within five percent of what actual sales are.
State rules that require assessments.
Yep, so it's not us setting it, it's the state.
But, at the same token, it can go down, in two thousand eight, when the housing bubble burst, we saw valuations go down.
Um, and of course, there's a couple. About these, I understand why they want a lower property tax to make Iowa more attractive. But it makes me think, what can we as a city quit doing so we don't spend as much tax dollars? Should we eliminate the brush dump? Should we have less police officers? Should we keep our trucks twice as long and let them get rusty? What are we gonna do, what, what are we gonna do to pay the bills? That, that's the concern.
And that's the challenge everyone's facing right now, and, and both House File and the Senate File, you know, they, they go after all three branches, the school, city, and the county.
It's almost like there's an assumption that we can do it for less.
And how do you limit our growth? How are we supposed to become progressive, and how are we supposed to grow our community if you're gonna limit what we can do?
Hmm.
And if you can only have one bond issue a year, or every other year, and it has to be at a general election, what happens when a company comes to town and wants to build a ten million dollar building and you, and you can't bond?
Yeah. Those, those are the challenges, and that's what we're looking at with these files, so I know, if you, if you're signed up for the legislative, like, I would encourage you to read those emails, uh, to, to read what bills are coming through.
Right.
Uh, local office of sales tax is still one of them that, uh, is a threat, that looks like the state might take that, and if they take that over, that was a voted on levy by our residents.
Yeah.
And it was passed by our residents, and that's, you know, dictates what we use it for. Anytime the state says they wanna take it on, and then backfill us, and they will pay us what we would have collected. I've been here quite a while, and I'm pretty cynical, because I've seen them take that money away when times get tight. So.
But they're in, they're in the black right now, they should be sharing it. I'm stating that fact, sure. Anyway.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Erin?
Nothing.
Okay. Dean, or, excuse me, Bill?
Nothing.
Mary Ann?
Um, at our last regular council meeting, Linda, you expressed some opinions about how our council is doing.
Yes.
And you said that, um, we're not doing enough to lower our debt, and I appreciate your concern, I'm gonna make some comments, okay? Uh, being a mathematician, I wanted to back mine with numbers, so, this is gonna be long, but, stay with me. Uh, we paid one million three hundred and eighty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three on our general obligation bonds. In fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we intend to pay off one million two hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars. This is a total of two million six hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars in just two years. As of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, we will still owe about eight million dollars in general obligation bonds, but let's remember that we borrow money to do projects to improve Manchester. Who among us has never had to borrow money for a car, a house, or a business, and we're running a business here? Um, we will also pay off nine hundred and twenty-four thousand forty dollars in revenue bonds between last fiscal year and this fiscal year. Uh, revenue bonds are what pays off our sewer and water structures for anybody that's listening to this that doesn't understand what they are. I think the numbers show that we are working hard to pay off our, and lower our debt. Um, I think we have to remember that we have also assumed no new debt during fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann, Tanya?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Dean? Linda?
I can try, okay.
Um, I don't have anything either, except that we have a meeting, uh, for the, they come to the Coca-Cola on Saturday, nine AM, at Aunt Yummy's. And we're gonna talk, we, Tim?
That'll be a separate.
Okay, perfect, alright. And with that, I just made a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we are adjourned, thank you everybody for coming, you have a wonderful evening. Thanks, everyone.